As the motion for speaking has been given in accordance with the Old Code of Voting Act pursuant to Public Laws License 75, Chapter 231, this agenda is completely self-stable. Except for the terms on Transom and Insurgency, we will consider all terms in the House Office posted on the City Trade website formally accepted. Councilman Lewis. Councilman Feliciano. Councilman Figueroa-Kendall.
President.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
President.
Councilman Harrison.
President.
Councilman Williams.
President.
Council President.
President.
I apologize. Um, excuse me, um, Lieutenant Bridges. We hope you drive this way. Thank you. And Mr. Kilo, the President. We will move forward on your call, Council President.
Please do.
Certainly. Uh, we have all business, we have some ordinance in the second meeting. And here, I'll fire that sentence, and I apologize to the Council President if he wants to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of February 7th to February 9th.
Motion. Seven to the second.
Seven to the second, on both of them. Councilman Figueroa-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council Vice President Feliciano.
Yes.
And President President.
Yes.
Motion Garrett, thank you. And Council President, would you like to ask for a motion to approve the communication of the issues?
Motion.
The motion is, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. On both of them. Uh, Councilman Figueroa-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council Vice President Feliciano.
Yes.
And President President.
Yes.
Motion Garrett, thank you. We want to, we have ordinance, we have second reading and public hearing. We have an ordinance, uh, ordinance 23 dash 003. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified in the state tax code as 69 and 69A18 on Street Block 84 of Main Line 65 and 66 pursuant to NJSA 4812 dash 13B to match international corporation for the sum of $12,000. Uh, since time of public hearing, does anybody wish to speak on this ordinance? Council President, I have none, who wants to move to ask for a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved in second, on both of them, thank you. Councilman Lewis.
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Vice President Feliciano.
Yes.
And President President.
Yes.
Motion Garrett. Ordinance 23 dash 044, ordinance amended and supplemented in Chapter 14 of the Code of City Trade traffic forward stop intersections as it applies to political grabbing and may be coming to nab. On both of them, is there anyone?
No.
It's been moved in second, is there anyone who wishes to comment? Ordinance. Council President, you are not seen on. If you want to ask for a motion, would you give one for Mr. Harrison?
Mr. Harrison, please. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Second. Councilwoman Gonzalez, thank you, on both of them. Councilman Lewis.
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Vice President Feliciano.
Yes.
And President President.
Yes.
Motion Garrett, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda. Council President, our consent agenda consists of resolutions 23 dash 045, 046, 047, 048, 049, 050, 051, 052, 053, 054, 055, 056, 057, 058, 059, 060, 061, 062, 063, 064, 065, 066, 067, 068, 069, and we have two additions of 70 and 71. Uh, it would be up to the council if they push to take a motion to add those items to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to add 70 and 71 to the consent agenda?
I don't know who you are. Yeah, I just saw it's like. I'm ready to make a motion. Can we ask for an explanation? About the first question. I just made my 237. By the way, so this is how I'm gonna go through it. Um, the GM has reported that we're not in the option to, um, have it to say that here is showing me a certain, oh, so is that, I don't know, that's wrong.
I'm sorry, Council President, is there any discussion you want me to get down on?
Gotcha, I would like to make some comments, but I'm sorry, please. Is that one up? There's always this out there.
Okay. Okay, so is there a motion to add 70, 71 to the, to the, uh, consent agenda?
Motion.
Thank you. Um, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Is there any votes? Not votes, but I think the consent agenda as well, 70 and 71. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, Council President? I understand one of these items would, is, is it a wish that you write to the, write to the record? Or do you, uh, would you like us to pursue the consent agenda?
I'm happy to write it to the record, please.
I understand you have, individually, you'd like to bring that to the record?
Yes, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Whenever you're ready, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Sure, so, um, today we wanted to honor or recognize, I have a base of other council members that have done this in the past, and I'm going to recognize the Latino residents and the future of the top Latinos, which one of the young members, um, has intended to be our leading member of the tour, um, speaking during this evening, um, but wanted to acknowledge, whereas New Jersey's population is 21.5%, according to its 2020 census here in the state, and also 32% of the street system in the state of New Jersey. Whereas Latinos in New Jersey have been making strides to create economy in those strong vibrant communities in cities such as the capital of state of Trenton, Camden, Brunswick, Paterson, and this fifth floor. Whereas the top Latinos of New Jersey, infamous to yearly open call, when New Jersey residents nominate people for four categories, and it is, whereas the city mayor, Pete Guster, has contributed to the New Jersey top Latinos as a help, as helping to evaluate state-wide Latino community nominee with the purpose that their stories are documenting for generations to come. Whereas the city of Trenton City Council of New Jersey, in person, are hardworking applicants to the Latino investment in New Jersey and the top Latinos initiative to continue, and showing that the Latino narrative is articulated and documented for future generations. Thank you.
Moving on, Council President, would you like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
I have a question regarding 2371.
Please.
Okay, so, in the discussion, I actually knew we were having a discussion, because it really was on this. Uh, my understanding, in the communication hall, is that the Lays on the Trenton downtown association is traditionally the North Border Council person, and now, particularly, I was not listed amongst the ways of all the different areas, so I was unaware that would not have actually been, would have been available on the North Border. Now presently, uh, I listed something in zoning law, which, as I know, that the Trenton downtown situation, Lays opposition was not simply going to leave myself again, uh, I would have, next to have not have chosen zoning law, and I had a long wish to be again, like that, to, uh, being a publicist for them, you know, making one of the citizens of the town, and the fact that the businesses are sort of busy in the North Border, like, so they considered that, and asked that we have a discussion for possibly bringing this back, or maybe some.
We can absolutely consider that, the, um, Trenton downtown association was only part of my 1500 two days ago, so after we were done this, and I was the only individual who did not have a, uh, organization that's represented, so I would actually want to be Trenton downtown association, and that's why I'm there right now, so we can ask, we can have a discussion, and we'll have resolved that other, um, things. And if there's two of us that we do, um, we can, we can have that discussion, but, um, yeah, we can have a discussion.
And I also have one, President, one, I think I'd like to propose a disclosure, and we have to, uh, crack that, that we have Lays on to Trenton borderwards. Um, I don't know whether it had ever been one in the past, but I think it's very integral, since we have a problem in the future in the border, uh, with the light of the decade, so that we should make sure we have a council against that function. I think that's a great idea, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'm sorry, I missed a little bit of that discussion, uh, just wanted to ask, is, uh, 71, 71, is on the, on the consent agenda?
Um, we just need to have amended, so if we, or then to take the downtown association for now, or that we should be aware, and we'll have a discussion of that later on. My next table, just in a minute. Do you want to table it?
Yeah, just put it up, just as I'm ready, please.
Um, can you go along with all that?
What would that be?
To, what am I going to table this?
Only the motion table, and second.
The motion to table 2371.
Second.
On both of them. Councilman Lewis.
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Vice President Feliciano.
Yes.
And President President.
Yes.
Motion Garrett. We move, uh, we take, uh, the resolution 23 dash 71 is tabled. Um, if the special is concluded on the consent agenda, uh, the President would like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second, on both of them. Councilwoman Lewis.
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Vice President Feliciano.
Yes.
And President President.
Yes.
Motion Garrett, thank you. So we have now listed a, uh, 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 I'm sure we have public comments. Council President, if you, um, if you're ready to start, I'll, I'll begin the public comment. Thank you, sir. Our lone sign of public comment is Mr. Diego Maya.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
I have to drive from Patterson, so I couldn't see to the resolution, but I want to thank you for coming together and seeing, um, what I've been working on over the last few years. A couple of the council people that have been part of this, uh, prior to being elected. First thing, um, Councilwoman Feliciano, prior to being elected, um, she, uh, that applied and Brown community together to discuss, uh, Hispanic heritage, wanting something that goes a long way to keep the community together. Councilwoman Jenna, she's also been a part of, uh, force part in the library, uh, distributing food to a lot of the people in this, in this, uh, city, so we did what we together, uh, with the Latin emergence. Uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gonzalez, also part of the, uh, like, uh, she, um, she helped the, uh, gave school bags to, to, uh, support, uh, young women that have been molested in the early part of, of the system in Columbia, so she, um, contributed to giving more bags to those little girls. Uh, so, you know, a lot of the people, you know, don't see my, uh, Latin spirit, multimedia effort, uh, supporting the political causes, but, you know, if it's worth it, we can, um, we can, uh, promote, you know, politicians, so, but on behalf of the Latino community, we want to thank you guys for passing this resolution, it goes a long way to documenting what the Latino community is doing throughout the state. Uh, if, uh, one of the data that is very important to know is that the Latino community put together that the city in the United States is the seventh largest economy, right after France and Canada. So it's important that we guys are safe in the capital, again, to, uh, notice and to take that consideration for the city class to move forward together. Also, I'd like to thank, uh, the President for the, uh, recent initiative of bringing the kids together to start writing about the city, the positive things about the city, and, uh, moving, uh, what most of the guys want to see in different times, is the big six girl. So, uh, I think it's important that we began work to reduce and making sure that these stories are being told of the positive things that are happening in the city, so, next year, uh, we have a category, the Latino immigrants, we try to resolution, where we have friends of the Latino community, and, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Chris, she's, she was named for being publicized. Next year, we're gonna bring on board the President for also doing this initiative with the kids, bringing the black to brown kids together to write about the city and, uh, do this positive thing. So thank you, uh, to the council for, for putting this together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, I have no other members listed for public comment, if you would move to the second comment.
I'm not hearing any votes.
Sorry, okay.
You can count on, for the state, we tend to, I believe, hope everyone's in the way. If you're on, you will. Nice day, right? A beautiful day. So I'm looking over the resolution, I think someone can almost like review it, but I cannot get the last one, 2371, which is two quarters, two quarters, and so, are you happy to go to public?
It's going to be.
What now?
It's going to be.
And I'll move on to the next one, I just want to talk about very briefly, um, you know, we have this really nice, you have Tino, it's West Cross, um, people are still very nice on roller street, but the streets surrounding are, and, and, I think it takes property value, uh, if you come over the, uh, the Winkin Avenue Bridge, you have West Crossing, that's just terrible on both sides, so it just kind of takes, takes away from the state, so the reality, you can take, you can drag your legs around you, so, um, here's, that's the east, you know, I think that's the north border, and then, oh, oh, I guess, little green, oh, you got something? I'll try, would you please, uh, take a ride, you know, I mean, I'm here, and try to, uh, look at that on you, this is something that will be done, I think that the residents will really appreciate that, so, but that's all I have for right now, you know, that's all I have, so I, uh, again, good to see you.
All right, members of all the courses speak. Seeing none, Council President, we want to move to second comment.
Please.
Uh, we'll be in order, we'll be, Councilwoman Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming, good evening, it's great to see so many familiar faces in Trenton downtown, and some of the faces tonight as well. I'll get right into it, uh, I want to start by congratulating Councilwoman Angela, on the resolution, uh, 23 dash 07, um, I would be very excited to be in Portland, and Latinos for a great amount of the percentage of population here in Trenton, and, um, it's important that we make sure every population that resides here is included, um, in our, our, in our city, and that resources and tools are, uh, to everybody, congratulations to the Latino community. Uh, I also want to say congratulations to Trenton High for the open room, the 30th Tuesday night, and congratulations in advance for their win tonight, we're going to speak that in this room. Um, I hope you can buy it, or you can have it. Um, I, I want to touch base on something that I mentioned Tuesday evening, that I feel for a reason that I forgot to say, um, in account of what happened at the other region, that after that, the response to, the trauma response that was missing for students, I mentioned that, but I failed to mention the trauma response for our police officers. I lived a police officer, one of them, that was involved in altercation, and, uh, who was actively breaking it up, he had to come to work the next day, and I want to advocate on his, he had, um, his fellow officers who experienced traumatic situations like what I mentioned, who are not given a chance to recover mentally, and I believe that that also affects their day-to-day work, um, and talking to him, I don't repeat what he said, but, I hope that he is getting the help that he needs, and I hope that the police department will offer the services that he needs and give some time off, and the other officer or officers that were involved in the altercation, and going forward, I hope that the police department will take into extreme consideration the mental well-being of our police officers that stay or who wants to get out of the country in a certain way, and I think that the reaction that we see from them, our communities, the dad of the rest, impact from those traumatic situations, and that they haven't had the opportunity to process that, and therefore to get the negative reactions from that, so I feel like mental health for our police officers should be a factor too, and that's my comments for tonight, thank you.
Councilman Figueroa-Kendall.
Good evening, everybody. Again, so many people, I'm gonna say it every meeting, because I want you guys to keep coming to these meetings, and I want you guys to keep reporting back to the community that you guys need to be able to meet, your voices need to be heard, see what the council's doing, and give us a chance, give us a chance, I know there's so many expectations of us, and I know so many people are so bruised from the past, you have so much that you want to see done in this city, but what I ask of you guys is give us a chance, I see us all working, I see us all with great ideas, I see us all moving forward, um, and I think that conversations that have been upheld, um, council members, that is going to get even more intense as we move forward, as we continue to learn, as we continue to understand our community better, as it pertains to the public, and as we continue to work for all of you guys. Uh, Mr. Diego Maya, congratulations to you, this resolution, uh, you do great work for the community, I've always loved working with you, and you're, you're always just so generous in recognizing people, acknowledging people, even when they're, you know, they're not trying to fake knowledge, um, just to thank you for all the work that the community, that left in the community, um, I know that, you know, I was recognized a couple of years ago by, by Latinos in New Jersey, you know, I'm more than appreciative, so, thank you, and I hope you continue to do the work that you've been doing. Um, I'm flooded with emails constantly, my south port is very, very active, there's so many things that they want done, and I've been getting the work done, and, you know, from getting stop signs up, getting them moved, getting the free removed, um, and just getting many emails, it's just so rewarding, but I can't do it without our administrators, without our directors, without, you know, our departments, who are actually feeding the message and doing their jobs, so I thank you all for that, because that's all that this community has been asking for, it is want, you know, us to get out, do the job, do the work that, you know, we're hired to do, that we're scheduled to do, um, to our police officers, again, um, I just want to see you guys, if you're doing, you deserve, you know, much respect to you, our firefighters as well, want to make sure you all get the due you deserve, um, it's horrible to hear stories that, you know, police officers, our firefighters, don't have the equipment that they need, that they deserve, to do the job that they're hired to do, that means the staff, you know, we need to make sure that we have the budget, the money in our budgets and the means, and we are putting these things forward, so that they are safe in our, they're safe in the work that they do, our volunteer, um, firefighters and other municipalities, they don't go into burning buildings, our firefighters do, so we need to make sure that we are paying attention to what they are asking for, and give them what they need within our means. Um, other than that, um, I'm also flooded with a lot of emails, I'm having to report from some of our youth, you know, our, our kids in their twenties, early twenties, that want to invest in the city, they want to know how, and they want to know how they get involved and, and, um, develop a district in here in the city of Trenton, um, I hope that we have the resources to help them, that they are future, they are investing in our city, you know, for what's to come, um, and other than that, um, in, in speaking to being able to get things done in this community, I just want to thank our council liaison, Karan Green, I know he's not here tonight, um, but he has been so instrumental in making sure that my message is heard from my constituents, and we're getting the work done, and, um, one more thing, the Trenton Community Street team, I also want to thank them, I had the, the pleasure to walk with them on our south port today, and they're really out there, um, getting the message out, you know, for different resources, different programs for our youth, for our, for our adults, for our parents, um, so, awesome, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Um, first, thank you, everyone, for being present this evening, it is a, a nice sight to see so many people in the audience, so thank you for being here, I also want to thank my colleagues, um, Council President, all of the other council members for approving this resolution at the last minute, I think it was well deserved, so congratulations to you, Ms. Diego, Ms. Diego Maya, um, I appreciate all that you do in this community, also, and what you do throughout the state, so, thank you, congratulations, um, and I just wanted also, just my personal today, just, um, as we just mentioned, Trenton High is playing this evening, um, hopefully we'll be winning, and we'll be playing Saturday at 1:00 AM at Metro and Pop, thank you.
Good evening, Councilman. Sorry about that. Everybody, um, I'd like to say, um, we, Tuesday night, we had a lot of motion in the room, um, the city's got an interest, we have a lot of concerns in the community, um, what happened in the arena, um, suicide, and, um, it should be happening, just, it should be happening in our schools, it should be happening in arenas, um, the city needs to continually move forward, and, uh, people, as said before, we do have, uh, all of us in the city, we gotta look out for each other, and, um, when we see something, we definitely need to be saying something, because we don't need to have, uh, issues in our community, get to the point where we're losing lives, it should never, that should, it should be the last visit, um, also, I would like to, uh, recognize, in the back of the room, back there, Mr. Craig, sitting right back there, um, Mr. Gray is from the, uh, Pantry of Stuyvesant, uh, 510 Stuyvesant, he does it every Saturday morning, uh, 8:30, right around 8:30, he's, uh, helping field the community, and also, Mr. Gray is a blessing to the city, uh, him, his family, and everybody else, if you come out there and volunteer and, um, help, help people in need, so, thank you, Mr. Gray, it's good to see you, it's good to see you in better health. So thank you, Mr. Gray. It's good to see you. It's good to see you in better health. Glad to see that. And like we said on Tuesday night, firewood, police, definitely deserve, they deserve the raises. They need to get paid and hold on behind that. We all spoke about Trenton High. Everybody in this room's got Trenton High pride. So we said, we don't have nothing to win tonight. So like we said, Saturday, one o'clock, just won't be there. Thank you and a blessed evening.
Councilwoman Woods.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Good evening. It is wonderful to see as many folks here as possible from our communities, especially the Latinos as you've heard before. But also the diversity of our community here in Trenton is extremely important. And while we have suffered as a city since last week, it's something none of us are going to forget. Certain none of us at council will. And something that we're going to really, as we go forward, maybe it's a safer city, maybe a school safer for everybody. And those are going to involve long-term solutions and hopefully some short-term solutions. We need to do it together and I'm very much forward to being a part of that. And hopefully, as we go along the time, all of you will be able to be a part of it. It is important having voices together in some of these respects of the department together. I mean, I first want to also congratulate, we probably, Councilwoman Gonzalez, on this resolution. I thought it did, and she has to read it because she said it was last second. That's okay, no worries. It is a great thing. New Jersey, we have one of the highest concentrations of Latino people in the country. That's a wonderful thing. When Trenton, when Trentonians generally came three flavors, Puerto Rican, African-American, and Caucasian white. And I'm very happy to see that the city of Montevideo is growing as much as it has. And has the spread of the Latino community from many different countries. And also, Latinx around the world. That's something that's going to generate energy and receive our city thriving. But I'm so glad to see it's supported and developed. It is important and as you said, our representation is important. And I want to congratulate Mr. Diego Maya. I know I've only known you for seven months, sir, but I know your advantage is a bunny. And thank you for your efforts to throw positive and be more positive in our city for sure. So there's a couple of things that I just want to talk about, and also, that have come up in my report and in the progress of my reports, which are illegal dumping. And as far as also dumping of materials, garbage, on properties, not known as by name, having of a property. Currently, the tickets for the fines for those are roughly a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty-four dollars. So I look forward to becoming these to try to work with our city, with the law department in particular, to find out how we can increase those fines to match it in the suburbs. Because one of the things that's been learning to me, we have a problem contracts, particularly from across the river, just lately. Because the cost of having one of those alders is about eight hundred dollars a day. Well, of course, if your fines aren't eight hundred dollars a day, it's a lot less expensive because you dump it in a city you don't care about. But we care about our city. We're going to defend our city. And we're going to try and help our city, help us to do it. Because one of the habits now is people do this, dumping in places like, there's a dumping site that recently found on Midway, so they're buying their homes. Well, they attract urban, they attract a lot of things that are negative to our city. And that's one of the things I'm looking forward to working with colleagues and our administration on fixing. And I just want to close also with an announcement, just a reminder that I was in billboards, it's a sign that we're very fortunate. Our elected officials with the Anchor Program, which is ending this coming Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. Please, if you haven't filed for it, it's something that will help that council, particularly in Trenton. Definitely can use the city, the state giving us more money. It's a circle of work on trying to get more money with the land and the city, as they guys. But please, just Google NJ Anchor Program and you'll get a direct link to the Department of Cancer Association website. They have a translation in English and Spanish, they have YouTube videos in English and Spanish. It's really easy to apply. But also, they have a call center that's available in the morning to be in late. That's also as English Spanish option. So please make sure you do have that, that moving back for yourself because it's important. And on positive, I just want to also congratulate Trenton Boys Basketball Team. This is another championship, state championship, all of they've won. And they do, please come to the game on Saturday. You'll be able to also see coach Yasmila Gonzalez and cheerleaders out there that really support our community. It's important for the boys to see the spread of our community. I think that's, that's something that brings us together, sports can always bring us together. When it comes to the Super Bowl, certain American even comes together, but this is something that's really important to start doing. So we hope to see you again at same council meetings in the future. Please, if you let us know what's going on, how we can do things better. The city website has all our information, fund numbers, and email addresses. And that's it. Please be safe out there and I hope to see you in the coming weeks, everyone. Thank you.
Vice President of the Council.
Good evening, everyone. I will be brief. First, I'd like to say, I'd like to shout out my student, Jabari Coats, who's here tonight. I've had an awesome privilege to educate Jabari in my finance classes at Trenton Central High School. And so I want to say publicly what a wonderfully phenomenal student he is and the barriers that he is pushing to break. Unapologetically be himself, right? Stepping up to the plate. So I commend you and I'm always proud of you and I'm glad to see you here tonight. Congratulations to Diego Maya, your idol, for, for, I'm not going to do it there, actually, I'm trying to stand. So, but congratulations to you and the phenomenal work that you've done. Congratulations to, I'll say, Congresswoman. To Councilwoman Yasmila Gonzalez and everyone that put this together to help bring this to fruition. Certainly, the, it is important for our communities to mesh, right? For our communities to respect each other, black, brown, Caucasian, all of us. Trenton is a wonderfully diverse melting pot of people. And we will accomplish so much more by coming together, by recognizing our differences and celebrating the uniqueness of who we all are, right? And this is a step, one of the many steps in that direction. So I'm excited for you. Congratulations to your son for the work that he does in his community and what he's looking to do here in this city of Trenton. And that's what it's all about too, right? Taking what it is that we have, extending it and not being afraid to help better someplace else. And that's what we need to do as Trentonians. We need to step up on what it is that we're responsible for. Help our, help ourselves, help our community members to look to do, to be better. That's how we'll get a lot of things done. I want to say that as far as getting in and doing the work, I want to shout out Diane Bellamy. She's not here tonight, from the Trenton Street Team. Today, we had a young men's empowerment summit put together by Mr. Taylor at the high school. Shout out to Mr. Taylor. He wanted to put something together. He brought a group of men in, they took the boys into school. And they poured good work, good words into all of them today. Trying to break through some of the barriers of trauma. Letting them know that there are people in the community that care about them. While that was happening, the girls were left sitting. So I took my girls, along with other teachers, girls that were sitting around. And I told Diane, come meet me at the school. And let's go, I called her last night. Come meet me at the school and let us do a workshop for the girls and feed into them. And it was absolutely phenomenal, talking about their real feelings to the core. And we'll also be facilitating a girls' summit coming up in Metis. So I would be pleased to bring that to the high school. Let me see. One more thing that I wanted to say. To the police. And to my colleague, Councilwoman Edwards. Thank you. Thank you for sharing what it is that you shared. All the times we look at the police officers and we just figure it was cop that just out there and do what they do. You know, you just don't go on some have feelings, some don't. Just do your job and just let it be. But the reality of it is, they are human beings, just like each and every one of us are. They have feelings, they have emotions, and they go through things, right? And they do deserve that time. The young man that was there with that horrible situation. I'm not sure how scheduling works or why he was told he had to put to work the next day after experiencing that. But yeah, he should have been extended some grace, if that was possible. If not that day, but in the days to come, to get himself together, right? And we do need to be more cognizant about how to treat other people. People are not just objects to be thrown around. And while people can come and go, right, you can replace bodies, but you cannot replace the people. And when you have good people in position, you want to maintain them, you want to respect them, you want to encourage them. You want to do right by them because they'll give you the very best that they can give when it's time for them to do so. Lastly, I want to say this. We started, the council body, we started going to trainings for our jobs, right? So we're going, we're going, y'all. People already going, y'all, we're going. DCA is talking to us, we're coming out, we're learning, right, our respective roles. And we're learning about things we can and we cannot do. But in the last training, that was the first thing that we had. The one thing that was brought to the forefront for us, for us, was the mission statement of the city of Trenton. And the mission statement says, "Recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility. To seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all of the city's people with respect and compassion." I intend to review that often. I intend to practice it daily. I encourage everyone to do the same. Thank you all for coming tonight. God bless you.
Councilperson Chris.
Thank you, sir. So believing to everyone, I want to do my best to do what I think is possible. I want to also congratulate our Trenton High School Boys Team. We are going to play the win with them on this evening. And that they will go out on Saturday for their, even greater win there. I want to also let folks know, being proactive, my husband, Commissioner Sam Frisbee. He and I reached out to Perry Shaw, Pastor Bellamy, and Police Director Wilson. Folks are saying that nothing is being said, nothing is being done at the end of the day on last Thursday. We want you to know that we did do something. We were proactive. We have assembled over a hundred men to go out there. They were out there on Tuesday, they'll be out there again on tonight. They have shirts, they are going out there, they're gathering more and more and more. We want folks to learn how to wrap their arms around our community. We have to let our people know that they can hear. And that's exactly what this effort is. It's not the police people. They are not trained officers. They've been given guidance by our police director to go out there and learn how to be there, how to stay with the gap for everyone else that is there. We want our people, anyone who comes to this community, whether you live here or you're visiting, to the best of our ability, we want you to be safe. So we're trying to do our part. Just like my colleague said, please be patient with us. We're doing our best. We are trying. Nothing is going to be overnight. But we are absolutely out there trying. And you have your messages in heart. That's why we put us here, all of us, I believe, that's why we believe in us. So we actually be patient with us. Ms. Diego Maya, congratulations, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Thank you for that reading. It was actually wonderful, I'm excited about, just a recognition and acknowledgement by the team, we believe, how we're growing and prospering. Officers and firefighters, you guys are essential in our community. I'm going to say that one more time. Top police officers, top firefighters, you are essential, but you're not just here and we can do without you because we can't. Our city would not function without you. So we're ready for the services that you're doing. There is not one person on this day that does not want to see your contract get done. And we are working diligently with our administration to make sure that your contract is finalized. Please understand that. We ask you to work with your department, your leadership as well. So when it comes across the table, everybody has to save us all and we get it done as quickly as possible. We want to work with you. We want you guys to get what you deserve. And we want everybody to be able to eat and not just have crunk so they have to take it to because they have not gotten their raises. DCA, thank you for being here. Appreciate you coming out and making sure they came down and just seen and ordered. Councilwoman Anne Williams, she mentioned the Anchor Program. I want to keep saying, the Anchor Program is not just for homeowners. The Anchor Program is for renters as well. So when you rent, if you are paying for the place that you live in, please go onto that Anchor Program and get some, whether it's four hundred dollars of your rent. And depending on the nomination, if you pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a lease, you will get a check. Please go on there. It takes nothing except your effort. It's free money. To our young adults, the young adults will be meeting again. A week from this, Saturday, they'll be meeting again at three fifty-nine Main Street Avenue, Trenton, New York City. We have a phenomenal lead. What is Trenton Speaks? Trenton Speaks. Trenton Speaks is an organization that we just started up where we're giving the city of Trenton a view. Our young adults, the opportunity to write their own narrative. Said they want to, they feel like they're not being heard. We hear you and we want you to write your narrative. So we have a young adult, and the young adult going to be here today, thirty years of age and, we want you to come out. At three fifty-nine Main Street Avenue on Saturday, we can get the data for you. Saturday, the fourth of March, three fifty-nine Main Street Avenue. We had it put down about turnout and we wanted to continue to grow. So come on out, let's take, we are taking that case to grow about five years. We have to wait, you know, so much to be, keep going. But the community is working together. Definitely, I mean, we want folks to continue to work together, working together so that we can get a possible. We get to write. They're giving us, the council is going to be giving us an opportunity to write our own narrative. If you don't come out, if you don't send your youth out to be a part of this, you have no complaint that you can give us to say they're giving us nothing but negative. Here's your opportunity. Send our youth out here and let us show people who we are. From our perspective, set someone else writing, getting paid for it, and they write you wrong. My last thing I wanted to say, on this past Tuesday, we had someone come in here and I believe Berkeley attacked by colleagues. To all of you, I apologize for not defending you and stopping you. That over here is gone. We are not tolerating it anymore. No one has to thank you so much or even listen to you. Anyone, what someone's advocacy has nothing to do with the business of the city, nothing at all. We are not tolerating, there's no reason for yelling, stopping, pointing your finger. That is, it is anti-Semitic and it doesn't make your point any stronger than it does that you can stand and talk civilized. If you want a positive response, you speak positively. If you want a negative response, you should speak negatively and that's exactly what you're getting. Unless you're dealing with people like this, who will still, even if they're negative, we will still do what we're supposed to do, whatever they do. We need to be professional, but we are not going to tolerate it. Not going to tolerate it. No one up here should have to defend who they are, where they were born. We are all Trentonians, all of us. It's our best interest right now is to take care of the best interest of our community. But that's it. I have nothing else. Thank you, everyone, for being out here this evening. And I'm Mr. Russell.
No, thank you. I think, Councilperson, if you'd like to ask for a motion to go into the executive session.
Motion.
So.
Executive, in the seventh, all sit down here.
Aye.
For any votes. Now, the votes will move to the executive session. The Trenton City Council wishes to recognize Mr. Alwight for murder ten years ago. The Trenton City Council wishes to recognize Mr. O'Nell White, who has been ten years of volunteer service to Trenton's families. Whereas, another white began her volunteer work with a better way about ten years ago, had found a home, she started her own local food pantry to serve those in need throughout the city. Whereas, his wife's successful operation was recognized by the public as well as the city housing guard, and she eventually started Sisters Helping Mothers, SHO, a food pantry based in the Dona Homes community. Where, and whereas, SHO's operation started with two volunteers, and has now grown to sixteen volunteers strong, serving one hundred and twenty-plus families every month as a community statement. Reliably opening every Friday, beginning at one o'clock in the afternoon, not stopping until every last box of food is gone. SHO gave us to the elderly and the children of their community, their model was no childhood with a bed home. Sisters Helping Mothers considers themselves more than a food pantry, they are a family. Just as this white says, they are a family who cares about the citizens of Trenton. Now therefore be of resolve, the City Council of the City of Trenton, County Person, State of New Jersey, hereby honors Mr. O'Nell White, and SHO, family, for their tireless, selfless, dedicated service to the citizens of Trenton. Family, don't be a family. In witness there of the arrow, I hereby to set my hand upon the steel, the steel of the city of Trenton, to be fixed this twenty-third day of February, 2023.
I like my team, who's there, because they're, they're, none of this will be part. Thank you. The young ones, they show that they eat, they show that they win, sometimes they're at four, because they're always there, with their pride, dignity, and whatever. I'm on for twenty-four hours, anybody who sees it, can be said from our mansion, it's home, it's where we came to our safety. We have everything from sleep, and I say that, I literally mean that. We keep our pride, we keep our seniors, they come to the front of the line, they don't have to wait. And they should, because we waited so long to get, to be a senior, and right now, I'm a senior. You know what, I'm as young as I feel, and it's nice, I have my team, Russell, Nicole, Carrie, Jay, Emma, his daughter. Who else, Emily, Amanda, all of you, this is my family, and we got them, this is a good thing.
This white, sorry.
And she knows how hard we work. I got this a volunteer, and our work started out by Jerry, but you know, this, this guy, this, they do this, we serve this soon. We need their ourselves, so it's all good. And I would continue to do it, continue, as long as I get food, I'm going to see you. Thank you.
Now, I want to, I want to ask you to come to the clerk's office, we're going to make sure to see too, if they can get more copies of that, about the motion, and we'll have fifty-four.
Thank you. Thank you.
Might as well stay up, because I have homework for you. And this is for the West Trenton Community Center. Against City Council, City of Trenton proclamation, whereas. On your phone, Vice President. Whereas, Trenton City Council wishes to recognize the West Trenton Community Center, five-ten status in Alabama, for its successful service to Trenton's families and those in need. And whereas, Trenton, the West Trenton Community Center is led by Mr. Daniel McCray, their CEO, a gentleman whose humble beginnings led him to sympathize with families who, like his growing them, experienced the challenges of lack of a home. Mr. McCray, knowing the feeling of going through that hunger, decided to act so others would not suffer as he had. And whereas, Mr. McCray, at his mother's suggestion, is standing upon what was a small candy store, to a full-size food pantry, feeding two hundred-plus people every week within the community. And whereas, like many projects, the West Trenton Community Center is not without the help of volunteers. The center is fortunate enough to have a diligent staff of professional gamers, who constantly make, make it their business to make a difference in the lives of Trentonians each day. Those members are Patrick McCray, CEO, president, Sharon Shivers, Vice President, Nika Glover, pantry coordinator, Valerie Jones, admin director, Lily Lowchow, pantry assistant, Axel Hansen, pantry assistant, and Matt, pantry assistant. And whereas, the city of Trenton recognizes food as a fundamental right, and understands the importance of equitable access to healthy nutritious food, as a vital component of productivity and development for citizens, especially young people, and is thankful to those that stand at the front lines of the communities, combating unjust effects of hunger that so many of our brothers and sisters have endured. Now therefore be of resolve, the City of Council, the City of Trenton, County Person, State of New Jersey, hereby honors the West Trenton Community Center, Mr. Daniel McCray, and his entire staff for their tireless, selfless, dedicated service to those in need throughout the community. And witness where our, our heroes who set my hand, and caused the steel of the city of Trenton, to be fixed this twenty-third day of February, 2023.